It's seven o'clock and I'm going to call the meeting to order. We do not, the mayor is not here this evening, so in cases of that nature, we have the city attorney open the meeting and ask for a motion to nominate a presiding officer for tonight's meeting.
If I'm in order, I'd like to nominate Councilman Bill Sheckel to be the presiding officer.
We have one nomination. We have a second, any other nominations? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. I said over here because I may need some assistance from Mayor of Kent. Riley.
Mick Riley.
Mick Riley, yeah. Thank you, Councilman. Let's get this show on the road. Okay, first order of business. Just passing my glasses over here. We don't have any outstanding groups or individuals, just the regular cast of characters. First, our business, we have a proclamation recognizing National Bourbon Day in Barstown. Mayor, would you like to do the honors?
Yeah, me too.
Tim, you want to do the honors? Read this proclamation.
Mr. Jones.
I'll go for it. Uh, city Barstown proclamation, whereas Congress declared bourbon as America's native spirit in 1964, making it the only spirit distinctive to the United States, and whereas Kentucky is renowned throughout the world as the birthplace of bourbon with its signature distilling industry producing more than 95 percent of the world's bourbon, and whereas generations of Kentuckians have continued the heritage and time-honored tradition of crafting fine bourbon utilizing Kentucky's farming community for natural ingredients and contributing to the Commonwealth's economic development, and whereas six distillers are located in Barstown who contribute to the local economic impact of $99,453,270 from tourism and $400,000 visits annually from visitors from all over the world, and whereas Barstown is known as the bourbon capital of the world with Barstown Bourbon being a part of the largest export among all U.S. distilled spirits, and whereas the bourbon industry provides over 30 percent of the employment in Barstown Nelson County, making it the second largest employer in our city. Now therefore, I, J. Richard Heaton, Mayor of the City of Barstown, hereby proclaim June 14th, 2018 to be National Bourbon Day in Barstown, Kentucky. And I don't think that there's a vote necessary unless you all want to build on record in supporting that proclamation. I'll make a motion that, on behalf of council, that the council expresses support of the proclamation and asks the mayor to sign it.
Do you need help? Any other comments?
We need a second on that.
Second.
Second, with Councilman Copeland. Any other pro comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like say. Also, we have tomorrow, the St. John's AME Zionist Fiscal Church with Reverend Roscoe as pastor, they're going to host the Kentucky Annual Conference of the African Methodist Church here in Barstown through the 12th through the 17th. And I think most of you all have gotten the invitation to attend that, but welcome to all the different churches that are going to be represented, hosted by St. John's AME Zionist. That program will start at five o'clock tomorrow and will be held at the United Baptist Church on Second Flushing. Go at why. We have a gas franchise bid open.
Yes, sir. We have, state law allows, as you all know, and you all have passed an ordinance, but state law allows for the city to sell public utility franchises, in this case, gas utility, to the best and highest bidder. We've passed an ordinance to that effect, basically enabling us to do that. We've put an ad in the paper requesting people to bid or to make their offer to provide those services, and I believe, Mr. Presiding Officer, we have one bid that you can now open. It's been sealed to this point. And if it's acceptable, I think you should make a vote, or by vote, to accept and award that franchise to that bidder if it's acceptable, and to authorize the mayor to enter into a franchise agreement, acceptable franchise agreement on behalf of the City of Barstown.
Think I probably should read this.
Yes.
Dear City of Barstown, on behalf of Louisville Gas and Electric, which is LGNE, please consider this letter as LGNE's bid for a natural gas franchise with the City of Barstown. This bid is in response to the City of Barstown request as contained in the May 18th, 2018, and June the 3rd, 2018, issues of the Kentucky standard. It is our understanding that said franchise will be for 20-year period with an annual fee of 3 percent with the right to increase to a total annual fee up to 5 percent at each one-year anniversary, as authorized by Ordinance B. 2018-11 passed by the Barstown City Council on May 2018. LGNE agrees to the terms and conditions of the franchise created by Ordinance B. 2018-11 and agrees to reimburse advertising expenses incurred by the City of Barstown. Please be advised that LGNE has also filed for a certificate of public convenience and necessity from the Kentucky Public Service Commission in connection with the submission of this bid. We appreciate the opportunity to present this bid and welcome any questions regarding the same. Respectfully, Elizabeth McParland, Vice President of Consumer Service. Would you like to?
Good evening. Thank you all for letting me be here. I'm Andrea Schroeder, on behalf of Louisville Gas and Electric, also known as LGNE. And we are, we're glad to get to be here tonight, to get to present this, this franchise bid to you all, and look for, if you have any questions, we look forward to answering those as well.
In that being the case, no further questions to please ask, but I'll entertain a motion to approve this franchise agreement with LGNE.
Yes, accept the bid.
Accept the bid for the franchise for LGNE.
Some may.
Motion made by Councilman Dohm.
Second.
Second, with Councilman Buckland. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. And thank you, Andrea. Also, also on our bid tab, we have a request from Horizon Engineering to submit, they're putting together gravity main plans for Phase Seven of Corman's Crossing, which they want to ask the city to take in about 70 proposed single-family residential lots. Jessica, would you like to sort out on that and field a scene on that?
This is just the formality that, basically, anyone doing a new phase in a subdivision that is requesting sewer service for that to be served, for, upon that subdivision guidelines, and the proposal for the new sewer mains goes to the Division of Water and it also comes to the City of Barstown and asks that it be accepted into our system upon it meeting all of the design and specifications for materials and installation. So, this is kind of that request for the next phase, Phase Seven of Corman's Crossing, such that we then, upon it meeting those guidelines, incorporate that into our public sewer system. So, if you guys would entertain a motion to agree to take that in upon it meeting all those guidelines and requirements, you can get draft a letter to the Division of Water accordingly.
You heard City Engineer Gilatrom. Any questions about that? This is standard procedure that we normally did when they were naming a request to be, request our sewer service, or in addition to be added to our sewer service. The necessary guidelines suggested at the city go about.
Presiding Officer, if I'm in order, I would like to make a motion that the Corman's Crossing subdivision Phase Seven sewer service request be approved.
Motion is made by Councilman Williams. You have a second. Second, with Councilman Buckland. No further questions, all in favor?
I got one. Normally, make that condition on annexation agreement and not your.
Not for this particular development. The other phases were not a condition of annexation because it means so far out of our service.
Just make sure we treat them basically, or treating, make any common plan on.
Correct. And this original development was approved for the overall development plan back, oh gosh, probably going on 15 years ago, plus or minus when the original Corman's Crossing of Phase One went in. So, they, at that time, they had an overall development plan that got approved by the council with a pump station that was sized to handle all of that development.
No further questions, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like say. Thank you. No HRBs, no PZs, correspondence? There's several here. The first one is a request for a road closure for the First Baptist Church of Barstown. They're proposing at the end of their annual Vacation Bible School, which is, which will be from the June the 20th to the 22nd, that on that Saturday, the 23rd, they're going to request that, they're going to have a block party from, to wrap up from Rock 11 to 4, and they request the street closure between First and Second Street over here. I think they'll have, similar to what they did last year. Y'all remember that? Anybody?
I'll make a motion we approve a road closure. I don't think it's going to, that block is not a major traffic area, so I don't think it would be a problem at all.
You must have any other questions about that? Motion been made by Councilman Kelly to approve the closing of Rasheer Avenue, 21st and Second Street, on the June the 23rd, on 11th to 4. Maybe a second?
Second.
Motion seconded, motion by Councilman Copeland. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like say. Thank you very much. These next, one, two, three, four, five, these next five requests are fireworks requests from nonprofit organizations that want to have their fireworks booths from June the 22nd to July the 6th, 2008. And top of our illustrious city of ours, I think all these people have put in the necessary paperwork and got everything in order for that.
They have, they have. It's, they're almost all the same as last year, except the last one, it's the same company, just different nonprofits in a new location, but they all have on file in my office what they need to have their special permits submitted by the city.
So.
Could we group them all together?
Sure.
Tim, group them that way?
I don't see why you couldn't.
Be the easiest.
Unless someone wants to separate one. If someone wants to have special consideration of one versus the others.
I didn't get any indication of that, so.
Well.
They just want the permit so they can move on to the next phase of the process.
The five nonprofits are Buttermilk Dates Foundation, Bloomfield Church of God, St. Vincent de Paul, Barstown Church of God, and Humane Society and St. Catherine's Academy of New Haven. So, if we have, if everything's in order, then I entertain a motion to approve those fireworks requests.
Some may.
Motion made by Councilman Copeland. Second. Second, with Councilman Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like say. Thank you very much. Next, we've got a review of the, of the special council meetings on May the 25th, 2018. And if there's no additions or corrections or deletions, then I'll entertain a motion by, we're going to approve them by unanimous consent. Is that the proper term?
Yes, sir.
Financial report. We have Mr. Mike Manuel here with the Tourist Commission, who has the fiscal year 2018, 2019 tourism budget.
Trying to get me from the top up, is my pants are so. Thank you all for reviewing this. I assume you all have a copy of it. Kind of the highlights, just to let you know, when budgeting this year, we get a 3% increase on our revenue and expenses as well. That's been pretty much the tradition over the last few years. Last year, they were a little bit more aggressive, prior to my being on board, and went with a 5% increase on revenue. We're probably not going to hit that 5%. We're up about 4% right now. The one thing that I do want to point out that is not in the budget was a special request that we received after we had approved our budget from the mayor and Judge Watts for a special appropriation to the Stephen Foster story, and to the drama, I should say, of $50,000 a year over the next five, each of the next five years. We knew this was coming. We knew, we had had some previous and prior discussions about it, but we had not had the official request. So, one other request over the years that happened like this, we approve our operating budget, and then we will go back in and make a special line item and amend our budget to show that $50,000 contribution. So, our board meeting is Tuesday, we'll bring that up at that time, but this is basically our operating budget for the next year. And I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Where's the, where's the $50,000? Where does that come from?
Right now, we've got it in savings and CDs and reserves. So, you know, depending on the timing of this first year, as far as when our revenues and everything come in, we'll be able to handle that, and then we'll plan with the savings and CDs. We have, and I don't have it with me unfortunately, but we've got enough right in our CDs right now to cover the next few years, and we'll be able to replenish that as our revenues hopefully continue to go up.
So, with next year's budget, you'll have a line item there?
We'll amend this budget to include a line item, and then moving forward, we'll have a special line item in budgets.
Question. Is $220,000 for digital media, could you break that down?
Sure. That's a great question. We primarily, we don't have enough resources to be on television and do a lot of the advertising. You see, I'm sure everyone's seen ads for California and Pigeon Forge and Myrtle Beach and Florida and everything else. We don't have that kind of money to do a campaign like that. So, digital media is advertising that you see on your devices, on media and websites you go to, all those ads that pop up. That's what we consider digital media. Also included in there are a lot of maintenance on the backside of our website, our web hosting, a license fee for our CRM system that lets us track tour operators and things like that. So, it's not all advertising, but the bulk of that will go into advertising. A good thing with digital for us is it allows us to be very specific and targeted who we're marketing to. I use TV as an example again. I can't really run a TV campaign in Nashville or Cincinnati or Chicago, but I can strategically use digital media and really go after specific demographics and targets that we're after and try to get our message out. So, it's things like retargeting. How many of you have ever done a search online for a product, a purse, shoes, a car, whatever it may be, and then you leave and you go to another website that has nothing to do with that, and suddenly that ad pops up? That's called retargeting. That's the type of thing that we do. There'll be certain keywords out there if somebody searches bourbon tour, bourbon trail, Kentucky, whatever it may be, whatever our keywords are, and we'll get into that in our demos. So, there's a lot of different ways to do that that I won't bore you with, but that's really what digital media is. The print media is just what it says. It's magazine ads and other types of print media that we'll use.
Is this the version we use, is digital media?
No, sir. I don't know how they had it listed in previous budgets, but they've used it before. And right now, we're probably 65% on our marketing budget in digital and 35% in print. It may go up from there.
And then you have media advertising too.
Pardon?
Then you have media.
Well, media is what those, is what I call prints. It's, the media advertising is our ads and things like Kentucky Monthly, Kentucky Living.
Okay. Then you have print collateral, I guess.
Print collateral are things such as our visitor's guide, our person's brochure that we print, collateral pieces, rack cards, things like that. And we're.
All those terms are kind of intermixed between the three.
And, and our finance officer's been in it for a long time, and myself, we're trying to get on the same page when I say, but that here, so.
The $6,000 building, that's, that's new this year, that's the rent you're now having to pay, correct?
Well, it's maintenance, more than rent. Rent's already in there, but that's something that's never been paid before, and the judge said we should have been paying that for many years. So, we've been able to work that in ongoing, so. And it's, you know, that happens sometimes when you're operating a business, so you have to adjust accordingly.
I have to get there $600,000 back, I guess.
Yeah.
I said they're spending $600,000 on the courthouse, so they tried to get a little bit of it back.
Mike, I have one question, and I may have to get John to help me on this, but the room taxes that are currently billed monthly were previously done quarterly with a lot of the other taxes that were assessed at the same time. Is there a reason that they went to a monthly billing versus the quarterly? I've just heard from other people that rent rooms.
I don't know. I can't answer that. I wasn't here when that decision was made. I might have to let you know. It does help us from a cash flow situation, and if you, and if you looked at our annual by month revenues, our transit tax is actually significantly up, and a lot of that is because of the growth of the Airbnbs that are here. And I think we have 20 or so Airbnbs that are currently operating that weren't over the past couple of years, and that's good, obviously. So, but I don't know the answer to that.
I've just gotten some feedback from several constituents that, you know, they used to be able to ball it all together and do it quarterly, which now they pay the other taxes quarterly, and this one's monthly, so.
Yeah, I'll find out for you. I don't know that.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions?
One quick one. Marketing reinvestment?
$17,000 or so? No, that's $50,000. That is, that's money that we, it's cash on hand for us, and it's something the board has done for about the last four or five years, where they budgeted that there to allow us to do more marketing. And it was really a function of how much cash the commission was accumulating, and they said, well, we've saved all this, let's, let's put it out there. So, that's what that, that line item is. And usually, at the end of the year, we just kind of show it. It's not really revenue, it's money we already have on hand.
Yeah, so just pulling out savings now, then.
Yes, sir.
I think if you go into accounting, that's kind of revenue, it'll feel, it's a little bit different than private accounting, right?
It's your petty cash flow, I guess.
I'm sorry?
It's your petty cash flow.
We use that, you know, that allows us to do some, do some marketing. There has a thing that, you know, I was, one of the magistrates asked me questions, that a third of our budget's in marketing, and I said, yes, sir. And I said, if I could get it up to 50%, I would, because we are a destination marketing organization. That's what we're founded on. Our mission is to market this as a destination, to get people to come here and spend money. And, you know, the more that we can put into marketing and tell our story and show people why they should come here, that's our, that's our mission, that's our purpose.
Any other questions? Looks like a pretty good budget, pretty impressive.
We have to buy a motion to vote to accept their budget as proposed or reject their budget?
If no one has any issues with the, with the budget, and all the questions that have been answered to their satisfaction, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the tourism budget for.
Let me ask a point of war. My brother's on the tourist commission, does that give me any time like that, you think?
We know you don't like your brothers.
I just want to at least disclose it, maybe I don't have to recuse by at least one disclosure.
I appreciate that, yeah, I don't think it's a problem.
So, you could abstain?
Yeah, I mean, he doesn't get any money at all.
Is it going to influence your vote?
No. There you go.
And if I'm in order, I'd like to make a motion to accept the Barstown Nelson County Tourist Commission's 2018, 2019 budget as presented.
Motion been made by Councilman Dohm to approve the 2018, 2019 budget. Give a second.
Second.
Second, with Councilman Copeland, Councilwoman Copeland, excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
Both, like say. Thank you, Mike, for your explanations.
I'll see this one before, so you can get around all the old stuff a lot better.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, it is. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have the first reading of our annual budget. Mayor Heaton has proposed a letter to the council, to the community leaders and the community as a whole, you know, outlining what's in this budget, and if it's, if you all don't have any problem, I'd like to read it if it's okay, before we read this ordinance and then make and answer a lot of the questions that people may have. This was proposed by, put together by Mayor Heaton and Tracy Hudson, our chief financial officer. And it goes, "It is a great pleasure I present to you the fiscal year 2019 proposed budget for the City of Barstown. We begin the fiscal year 2019 budget with a very healthy balance of $8 million in unrestricted utility reserves. This will permit us to use the reserves for capital project planning, engineering, and constructions where needed. Our overall net asset position is $72,439,500 on the balance sheet. The current net cash and fund balance is total $21,009,46,992. The fiscal year 19 budget consists of $57,806,050 in revenues and $56,544,985 in expenses, an increase of approximately $4 million over fiscal year 2018. The increase is primarily the result of higher utility sales and accompanying costs, $9.2 million in major capital expenditures, and the amortization of the, for the repayment of the loan for the recent $1.7 million in land purchases. There is approximately $1.4 million of fiscal year 2018 capital projects that will be carried over in the fiscal year 2019 projects list. There were $5.4 million in major capital projects in fiscal year 2018. The revised pension contribution will add an additional $175,000 to the city's current pension contributions. You will also note there is no use of indirect cost allocation for this budget in all departments, which is a general count number of 8,000, which is the first time since I've been the city governor that has, has occurred. Some of those costs now have been distributed directly to salaries and to wages in all departments. As a result of this change, the general fund no longer needs to reply on the utility funds to balance their budgets. The budget represents the financial plan for the coming fiscal year 2018, July 1st, 2018." July two thousand, July first, two thousand eighteen to June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Now, this plan will include the following. The fire department is moving to a new location, thus adding a second location with the acquisition of the nuclear ball project. The police department has requested five new vehicles for a hundred ninety thousand dollars, and body camera data stores at twenty thousand. The street department will continue its sidewalk program in all and will construct an additional sidewalk on the south side of East John Rowan. There is also an LED conversion plan for downtown Barstown. Major capital improvements for the water system include the water treatment plan will finish the conversion to chloramine project starting in the spring, replacement of the ageable lines will continue in the downtown area, and additional lines will be made for the Bluegrass Parkway to the Nelson County Industrial Park. Major capital improvements for the sewer system include completion of the eighteen hundred feet of sewer line on East O'Brien and Mothenburg Lane. This is our ongoing, ongoing effort to prevent stormwater infiltration into our sanitary sewer line, thereby preventing sewer line overflows. The budget lists several projects, including the Round Creek Truck Sewer Main, upgrading the Potter Shop Pump Station, plant improvements at the Town Creek Plant, all of which will be filed as soon KIA loans or through issuance of bonds. Continue to expand our cable and internet services to new areas in Nelson County. These expansions have resulted in a need for more headings space. The fire department moving to their new station will help with said expansion, thus improving our cable and internet service to better meet the needs of our customers. Our administration appreciates the open dialogue we've had with you, and we look forward to continue to work together to move our city forward in this coming fiscal year. Sincerely, J. Richard Heaton, ladies. We, we spent quite a bit of time kind of going over this budget, and I know Tracy and the mayor and all her staff members have worked diligently to put together a good budget, and, uh, uh, we've had a chance to ask a lot of questions and, and, uh, and the main thing, I think, is for the first time, and Tracy may correct me if I'm wrong, that we balanced the general fund budget without having to take the reserve, using reserve on my utility fund budget.
That's correct.
Which is really the way that it should be, so.
Right.
I guess we could thank the previous council for changing the occupational license fee to that part of the word, we can now do that. And if, uh, after reading that, if, uh-
Someone would need to introduce the ordinance, and I'd be glad to.
All right. Well, Mr. Presiding Officer, if I can be in order, I would like to introduce the, for first reading, ordinance number B, two thousand eighteen dash, I guess the number to be assigned, the annual budget for fiscal year two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, and that's our city attorney's brief.
Yes, sir. Ordinance number B, two thousand eighteen dash, uh, number to be assigned, fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, proposed budget, an ordinance adopting the city of Barstown, Kentucky annual budget for the fiscal year July first, two thousand eighteen through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government, city government. Whereas an annual budget proposed and a message has been prepared and delivered to the city council, and whereas the city council has received, the budget proposal and made desired modifications now therefore be ordained by the city of Barstown Commonwealth of Kentucky, section one, that the annual budget for fiscal year July first, two thousand eighteen, ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, is hereby adopted as follows. City of Barstown summary of operating budget, uh, fiscal year two thousand nineteen. Um, the, the headings will be general fund, followed by revenues, then expenses, and then total revenue over or under expenditures. Uh, general fund, administration, thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in revenues, expenses five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, five hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and eighty-three in revenue over, under expenses. Police, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, revenues three million one hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred thou, eight hundred dollars, uh, in expenses, two million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars, revenue under expenses. Recreation, one hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in revenues, expenses five hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, uh, four hundred and six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, revenue under expenses. Pool, fifty-four thousand in revenue, expenses seventy-five thousand, twenty-one thousand revenue under expenses. Fire, three hundred and fifty-four thousand in revenues, expenses two million two hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars, um, leaving one million eight hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars, revenue under expenses. Coback, one hundred, uh, sixty-one thousand dollars, revenue, expenses ninety-five thousand fifty dollars, thirty-four thousand, fifty dollars, revenue under expenses. Finance, seven million six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in revenue, uh, expenses six hundred and ninety-one thousand, twenty dollars, uh, six million nine hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars, revenue over expenses. Street, fifty, uh, revenues five hundred and fifty-five thousand, fifty dollars, um, expenses one million five hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred dollars, one million fifteen, fifteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, revenue under expenses. General fund budget, uh, these are totals, uh, revenues nine million thirty-five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, expenses eight million nine hundred and thirteen thousand, thirty-three dollars, one hundred and twenty-two, uh, thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars, revenue over expenses, and that's the ending balance. Combined utilities, uh, electric, uh, revenues, uh, seventeen million three hundred and seven thousand five hundred dollars, expenses sixteen million nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand six hundred dollars, uh, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred dollars, revenue over expenses. Uh, water, seven million eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred dollars in revenues, seven million five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars in expenses, three hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars, revenue over expenses. Sewer, eleven million sixty thousand five hundred dollars in revenues, uh, eleven million thirty-two thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars in expenses, twenty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars, revenue over expenses. Cable, uh, net, uh, ten million seven hundred thousand dollars in revenue, expenses ten million six hundred and eleven thousand, thirty-three dollars, and for eight hundred, eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars, revenue over expenditures. Uh, garbage, uh, one million eight hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, revenue, one million five hundred and three thousand, eight hundred dollars in expenses, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars, revenue over expenses. Combined utilities budget totals, revenue forty-eight million seven hundred and seventy thousand five hundred dollars, expenses forty-seven million six hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars, leaving, uh, a total of one million one hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars, revenue over expenditures, uh, and that is the ending balance. Uh, general fund and combined utilities ending balance, uh, revenues fifty-seven million eight hundred and six thousand fifty dollars, expenses fifty-six million five hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars, one billion two hundred and sixty-one thousand sixty-five dollars revenues over expenditures. Section two, that any and all ordinances inconsistent with the ordinance are hereby repealed, and section three, this ordinance shall take effect July first, two thousand eighteen, after its passage and publication as required by law.
Thank you, Kim. This is just the first reading. Uh, we don't have to have a vote or get any questions or anything. Excuse me, that anyone might have, but I think we went through this kind of thoroughly in the last few councils meetings, but if there's any other questions that, uh, that need to be brought up, we can do that now. Not, we'll accept the first reading by our city attorney, but there's a bunch of them. Okay. All right. Your staff, what do you, Jessica, do you have anything you need to bring up?
Um, I believe, uh, Mayor Oliver, the clerk, had put along each council member, uh, in front of them, I guess, a public notice that Barton's Distillery kind of put out this week. I guess just an opportunity to inform you guys, if you aren't familiar with their process of, uh, their lagoon cleaning, I'm really, it's really pleased to see that they took it upon themselves to do their own public notice to the community about that work. Uh, they didn't really notify me directly, and they were going ahead and just notifying the community in general, so I thought that was really good on their part. Uh, just that every year they do, uh, they clean out their lagoons as part of their waste treatment process and, and dredge those, uh, waste lagoons. They, in the last year, was the first time that they had tried kind of a different method that actually really did a much better job of keeping the odors down. It's a similar process that we use when we do our lagoon cleaning, uh, which has only happened maybe once because a little different nature. Um, but they look like, it looks like they're going to plan to begin that work on the eighteenth, and it's going to occur for between two and four weeks. I'm assuming that's probably depending on how full they are. I'm not really, not really privy to that information, but it looks like they're wanting the community to know that there might be some elevated odors during that time. Um, but I do anticipate that it's similar to last year, which was a much significant improvement, and again, I'm, I'm excited that they took that upon themselves and that they're, they're letting the community know.
Do they put phone numbers down there so we can follow in?
I'm sure they, you can find them, their phone number in the phone book or online and, or-
Jessica's directing.
Yeah. Not me. It's not my phone number. Um, but they have made some really good improvements over the last year, um, just in what I've seen in their whole free treatment processes. They've really, uh, spent a lot of money and made a big commitment in what they've added just in the la, in their construction down there, so I'm hoping that the community has noticed. I've certainly seen it on, with their discharge into the, to the city from a sewer, sewer discharge, uh, point of view, so I guess it was just they need a little time to get, get their funding in place to make those changes, um, from their corporate offices, but, um, that's all I have. I saw this and thought if anybody had any questions, I might could speak to it just a bit, but.
Tracy, you ready?
Uh, well, the budget process is almost over.
Well, you've done a good job with that.
Thank you. Um, it's, it's actually, it was kind of fun to share, to be honest. Uh, and I want to thank Mary for taking care of the ordinance while I was gone last week. Uh, she did a good job. And today, I actually talked to Moody's, considering that they do the bond issue for us and we're going to need them, um, because of where we're looking at as far as our financials currently, and with you all taking the indirect costs, of course, the dividend's gone, they're happy to see that, so I'd like to see our credit rating. It looks like it's going to go back up where a couple of years ago it had gone down, so.
That's it. Chief Tracy, you're going to go along with you?
Everything's going great, so, no issues, so that, that's a good day.
Chairs. Chairs?
We're working to make you. Chief Matt?
Everything's going good.
Councilman?
How's it? Are we, are we, councilman comments? We've got a second committee meeting, uh, Thursday at five o'clock, those are on, running around, anybody else want to come, I guess? I don't know. Well, I guess I can invite all the council, because we'll have, end up having a special council meeting, have to do that, so. So, up to less than a quorum if y'all can come in.
You're welcome to come, but one sniper at the door.
Uh, I have one thing. Um, I'm a member of the National Foundation for Women Legislators, and they had contacted me in regard and, uh, scholarships available for young women that are in high school. So if they were a senior for two thousand eighteen, or they're going to be a senior or junior, um, for two thousand eighteen, um, they were, um, they are available to get a three thousand dollar scholarship. And, um, it's just like a mentoring type of a program, um, it's an all expense paid trip, um, to talk and be mentored by, um, female legislators, learning political and, and government, uh, policies and how things work. Um, it's also an educational benefit. Three thousand dollars is a lot of money, so it's not just a one scholarship to just fifty people. I mean, we can nominate as many people as we like, it's an essay. So if anyone has, um, some names that they would love to give to me, um, so that I could board those on, and the agency will reach out to them, they will give them all of the requirements that are needed for them to apply for that scholarship. And I know now, uh, more than ever, scholarships are so important because funds are being cut everywhere. So I would like our state to be represented by several young women to get this scholarship. Also, um, as a member, um, I am part of a committee that, uh, is involved in civil activities and, um, proactive activities. And so June the tenth was, uh, National Children's Day. Um, the kids didn't come in in time, and it's, it's a red sand project, and we're focusing on human trafficking, because kids between the age of fourteen and sixteen are the most trafficked nationwide. So, um, we didn't get the kids in time, so what I'm going to do is partner up with a couple of the agencies, um, and make sure that we can get the project done at least, uh, even though the National Children's Day has, um, passed. So, um, I will give updated information and reference to that, but I did want to acknowledge that, uh, there was a National Children's Day, but we didn't have a, a council meeting at the previous week, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Coop. Okay, under new business, uh, we have a mobile food vendor application, Auntie Anne's Pretzels. And in talking with our city clerk, uh, they've gotten, they've got some more issues to get squared away. Mary, you want to elaborate a little more on that?
Sure. I've been working with Dwayne Molson, who's the owner of this franchise truck, for a couple of weeks now, and it was really just a timing issue for him to get all of, um, the documents required. So I asked, I'm asking on his behalf, if we, if the council would approve a conditional permit, meaning that, um, he would be required to go through the remaining steps, which is having his business license signed off on by planning and zoning, uh, presenting a site plan to planning and zoning, meeting the remaining criteria. He had hoped to be on the June fifth council agenda, and of course, we canceled that. So he's anxious to come to town, and he's, he really has been diligent in getting me what I've asked, so I feel confident that if, that if I work with him through the rest of the process, that he'll meet all the criteria for a permanent license. And I think the community would benefit from it.
Well, so he doesn't have a location yet?
That's, he, Save-A-Lot is willing to host him, but he couldn't, um, get to planning and zoning with a site plan in time, he was traveling for a funeral, so.
So he's got, okay.
Can I do that thirty days on one location, is that correct?
Um, no more than fourteen days straight.
Fourteen days straight.
So for instance, Hog runs barbecue, um, alternates musics and Save-A-Lot, and is never in one location for more than fourteen days, and that's really designed so they don't park outside of a brick and mortar restaurant, um, and, and take their customers without having the expensive rent and utilities and things of that matter, so.
Parking license.
Yeah. So, he needs to present to planning and zoning, uh, the diagram of where he'll be located in the Save-A-Lot parking lot, um, and have Jan sign his business, city business license, and that is new, just a couple of months implemented, and I wasn't aware of it, so he wasn't able to get it done in time for this meeting, so.
And he also needs to give you a letter from Save-A-Lot, I think, too.
Yes. Yes, he does. And I've spoken with Celeste directly about him, she's anxious for him to come and hoping we can get this process completed soon. That's why I put a conditional approval, and I'll monitor.
Yeah, the approval would be condition on meeting the remaining requirements of mobile food vendors. I mean, generally, you can make that motion.
I guess you all got a chance to look through this. This is all pretzels?
Yeah. I've got a picture of his truck there.
Yeah, there's E-Town Mall.
Yeah, E-Town Mall. Yeah. It's really nice.
Auntie Anne's Pretzel?
And since the pretzel place is open in Mallmark, I think they'll do well. Yeah, I think so. I like them, they're very nice.
What do you say?
It looks pretty good.
What'd you say, Tim?
He said, "I'm gonna show the wife I have Annie's Pretzel."
I would have to agree. It's pretty good.
It is good, yeah. I must be the pepperoni ones.
I'm sure he said it.
That's too much sugar.
So I guess you're saying you don't have a problem, anyone have a problem approving this business license with the conditional approval that he finished up his necessary?
Well, now I know what it is, because that, he didn't have that on, he didn't have a location on the whole here originally, suspended, but now I'm fine making a motion in. I make a motion we approve Annie's, Annie's Pretzel Mobile Food Vendor Application on a condition that he meets all other ordinance requirements as determined by our city clerk.
Thank you, Councilman Buckland. No further questions about all in favor?
Aye.
Any city council comments? Announcements, comments?
Yes. Someone reached out to me, St. Monica's Parish is gonna have a summer picnic. It's gonna be on Saturday, June the 16th, from 4 to 10:30 PM. There will be a meal served, and there's a raffle, and there's cake, some pies, and games, so, so wish, please come out and support St. Monica's Summer Picnic. Thank you.
What's the date of the mission?
It's the June the 16th.
Saturday?
Saturday, yes.
And 4th?
4th.
10:30?
I mean, look at myself. 4th to 10:30.
You need to pay a pizza dough.
I headed down.
Any other council comments? Barstown Optimists Club is having a pancake breakfast at Barstown Baptist Church from 9 o'clock to 1 o'clock this Saturday, taking donations, and while we donate all back to kids through programs. Any other announcements?
I hope this has been noticeable, but Pat might watch, probably watch this better than anybody in this room, but Mayor and I have been kind of working on a little bit different plan to keep our streets a little bit neater and cleaner downtown, and the parking lot's picked up, and I really think it's starting to pay off. We're kind of using some of the city workers when they have some downtime and trying to utilize their time a little bit better and pick up more regularly, especially during the summer. And to me, it really looks a lot better now if we could just get people to know their cigarette butts in the right spot instead of in the middle of the street. That would really help the look for our town.
Thank you.
You want to comment on that, Pat?
I was just gonna add to that, then hopefully within the next week or two, some cigarette butt containers will be up on several of the post-stand accounts.
Yeah, they've been, you know, for a while, just getting them up.
Joe, does anything need to be done as far as the brickwork, like on the streets gave, I've noticed that, and I don't know if that's just individual businesses that aren't keeping them as clean as they should, but have you noticed some of the brickwork on the, on the pavers themselves, kind of starting to look, get some...
It's really too possible, I think, but yeah, I think it's gonna need some maintenance here pretty soon, but, yeah. Joe, we'll bring that up to committee meeting next time.
You're the street committee officer. Any other comments? If not, we have three cemetery deeds, William Bruce and Denise Carey, they've got one grave, Nancy Morrell one grave, and Godfrey Callum one grave. I think we usually approve over the flagging Adams consent. Any other announcements? Under that, well, if there's no further to do, then I'll adjourn the motion to adjourn. So, you're on council meetings, I wouldn't know.
Always.
Second by Councilman Buckland, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Welcome. I have to change.